I'd like to call order the North Aurora Village Board meeting on Monday, August 20, 2018.
Open with a silent prayer or meditation.
I'd like to look into the plight of the United States of America and to the Republic or which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mayor Berman?
Here.
Trusty Capino?
Here.
Trusty Lowry?
Here.
Trusty Curtis?
Here.
Trusty Carroll?
Here.
Trusty Gaitley?
Here.
Under audience comments, I have one, Nick. Dolly, is that, would you like to speak?
Yes.
Now's your opportunity.
Let me tell. I don't know how, this is my first time ever doing this, I just came from work coaching in school. I have some information, I wrote on there, I just wanted to, I've been corresponding with Officer Fisher about speeding in our neighborhood, it's a pretty big issue, familiar from baseball, but I also, I just brought some information I wanted to share as far as just trying to be more proactive with some speeding down some of our neighborhoods in Westover, Westover Street particularly, and we've been working with the police department over the last two years with speed traffic, collecting the data to show the percentage of speeders that are happening down our street. I have the information, I don't know if you would like it right now?
Whatever.
Yes.
Yes.
Fine.
So that you can see that there's roughly, you know, forty thousand cars that have come down over our street and doing over twenty-five miles an hour in the middle of our one-third of a mile street, seventy-five percent, I'm sorry. Roughly seventy-one percent of the people, the fourteen thousand cars, when the thing was done in the middle, over ten thousand cars do twenty-five miles an hour over. That's, that's pretty significant when we've got about twenty kids of under ten years old or younger. There's also a psychologist report that shows that kids cannot detect why kids get hit in the beginning, it's from American Psychologist website, about why kids cannot process cars that move twenty miles an hour or faster, they can't judge the depth perception and it causes to a lot of accidents. So there's that, that, there's, they were, just some, just kind of more information about the causes and how speeding impacts it, you know, the police has, they've ticketed, they've parked, we've had numerous accidents, but it does not seem to be changing any of the behaviors from residents in the neighboring communities, so we're just kind of looking for some physical help that can, speed bumps or traffic controlling, different ways that can help curve the speeding down our, down our street, which may make it unsafe.
Can you state your, your address for the record?
My address is 2065 Westover Road, North Aurora.
I have a question, Steve Bosco.
Yeah.
What would be the requirements to install speed humps at a residence request? Is there a certain data set that needs to be reached?
Yeah, what we would do typically is John and the police chief would go out there and see if there's any reason that they would need to. Now, I've actually seen the speed study that the chief produced and I was just looking at the numbers. According to our numbers, eighty-nine percent of the people are doing basically the speed limit or five over at the most in the last speed study. The village, I mean, it's up to the board ultimately whether you want speed humps on a street. Typically, we wouldn't recommend that because it slows down response times of emergency vehicles and it's harder to plow when you have to pick up the blade every time you hit a speed hump. So, a lot of villages don't want speed humps in the street.
Where is the seventy percent number that's written on this page saying seventy percent are speeding if you're saying eighty-nine percent are in compliance?
What I have given you is, there's two, there was actually two. So, the one that's via email, that was information from the police department, that's when the speed trailer is put in the middle. The last page is when the speed trailer just recently, this past couple months, two months, was put at the entrance of Deer Path and Westover, so as cars were coming to a stop.
But what's the total percentage, what's the total percentage exceeding the speed limit? And what is the speed limit?
Twenty-five.
And what was the total percentage on the second, on the second one?
Steve has, Steve has the most recent ones. Steve, if he's looking at anything, yours I think would be the most recent ones. I have, I have, I didn't know Nick was going to be here tonight, I apologize, otherwise I would have had all of my numbers, but I have three different readouts from, from three different times when the speed trailer was put on Westover. I believe two of the, it goes back about a year and a half altogether. I believe two of the times we had it out there, it was in the middle of the street, and the most recent time it was toward the end by Deer Path, so it was catching people coming eastbound on Westover. The numbers are, they're fairly close whether you put it in the middle or the end, but they're a little bit different. The most recent one shows that about, I think it was Steve said eighty-nine percent were twenty-nine and under, I believe, is that what it was?
Yeah, according to this, this is the eastbound Westover at Deer Path data and its start date was June 12th and it went till August 1st. Eighty-nine percent of the drivers were doing twenty-nine or under, ten percent were going up, more were going up to thirty-four, so ninety-nine percent of the drivers were at thirty-four miles per hour or under, one percent exceeded the thirty-four mile per hours. The speed limit posted is twenty-five.
So is this something that's just a perception that people are going fast? Because it doesn't seem that the data is, is supporting the accusation.
Well, you know, I don't know how this one, when this printout, because this somehow doesn't match, down here, it shows, you know, twenty, twenty, uh, speed limit of twenty-five or more was nineteen thousand five hundred and forty-four cars, which is thirty-two point five seven percent, doing twenty-five or more, along with the thirty-five or more, which is three hundred and eighty-nine, that which is point six four percent. Again, this, I think this is a little misleading and he and I communicated, this was at the entrance when cars were coming uphill to the stop sign to exit Westover onto Deer Path. So, you know, the previous one that was in the email, that was in the middle of the street where cars, you know, a one-third stretch of a mile, it was dead in the middle and that's when it showed that seventy-one percent of the cars were doing.
So I have a question for the chief, how many citations have been issued on this street? I mean, is it just something maybe we should just be stepping up patrol? Or what's your recommendation?
We did for a while, we, we sat out there and wrote, if nothing else, we wrote several warnings, but of course, some of them probably warranted actual tickets. I didn't know I was going to have to have those numbers tonight, I can certainly get them and pass them on to you, that's easy enough to do, but we have had extra details out there where we have written them, but I'll be honest with you, unfortunately, it's like anywhere that you do that, the, the two days after you go away, people go back to their natural habits, so, you know, we can write several tickets and it does slow them down for a while, you have the speed trailer out there and it does slow them down for a while, but like I said, people tend to go back to their natural habits. I will say, compared to some other streets, the, a lot of people are in compliance on this street, I mean, when you're talking almost ninety percent, you know, at twenty-nine or under, it's just, you know, what's acceptable is four miles and over, four miles an hour over the limit, acceptable? You know, is, is the twenty-nine and down acceptable or is it, you know, twenty-six and above not acceptable?
That's the confusion right now, is the residents, right, I mean, looking at the numbers, he's, you're right about the thirty percent plus, but what we're seeing is out of that thirty-two or thirty-three percent, twenty-seven percent of that is people doing twenty-five to twenty-nine. So it's, the majority of the people technically are speeding, but it's within four miles per hour of the speed limit, which is, that becomes the perception of whether or not that's something we would normally pull people over for.
I agree with you, you know, and that's where, like, some of this data comes in, you know, at twenty miles an hour, there's a ten percent chance of being killed, where just thirty miles an hour, around that twenty-nine number you keep using, it goes up to fifty percent chance of the likelihood of death. And again, I want to resort back to these numbers because this is in the middle of the street. That was, they are coming around a turn, they're coming up to Deer Path and they, they know they have to stop and they're slowing down. It's not a true accurate as in the middle of the street where, you know, twenty-five to twenty-nine, just five, was forty-five percent and thirty to thirty-four was twenty-five percent of fourteen thousand cars. Ten thousand five hundred cars were doing twenty-five miles and over, twenty-five miles hour or more.
And that, that's something, I also spoke to Officer Kittner who takes care of the stuff, that I, that I asked him if he could, and I don't know if he can, he's looking into it, if he can manipulate the speeds so that twenty-five is not included in the twenty-nine, I'd like twenty-five included in the twenty to twenty-five range because twenty-five is technically doing the speed limit, so unfortunately, it's showing it with twenty-five to twenty-nine, which is showing it in the, you know, the, over the speed limit section, whereas if I can put it in the twenty to twenty-five, so if somebody really technically is doing twenty-five miles an hour, which is the speed limit, they unfortunately show up in the, in the speeding section rather than the non-speeding section, if that makes sense.
Now, Chief, I, I notice in the subdivision and Tanner Trails, they set up one of those machines where you actually reach your speed just as you come to, what is it, Tanner Trail, Tanner Trails, Nelson Lake, Nelson Lake, yeah, and I mean, I mean, I drive twenty and I hardly ever hit the twenty-five, but I see cars that they just fly right by that. So, I don't know if there's any way that we can perhaps try to enforce that in a more strictly manner, because I drive a pickup truck, I mean, but I see all the other smaller cars just go through my pickup truck like it's parked.
Sure, sure, yeah, and, and again, I have no problem, you know, stepping up patrols as, as time allows for the officers and, and, you know, strictly enforcing different areas of town, that, that's not a problem. In ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, it's the residents that live through there that you're pulling over and giving tickets.
Chief, on the, on the speed bumps and like extra stop signs and things, I mean, in the past, they've said what those studies, really people do is pick up the speed between those, almost like they increase their speed because they're slowing down like a stop sign like Sicomare, there's always been talk about, up north in the Highlands, they have an extra stop sign, but really, from that stop sign to the next stop sign, they're, they're trying to catch up, so I mean.
Yeah, it's probably for every study that says they're great, I can probably find one that says they're not for stuff like that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, though, that's what I'm saying, I'm not sure if that kind of device is really what I think they're looking for, unfortunately, it is the residents and they're not taking responsibility for how they're driving and.
Right.
What it is, I think, is also we have a lot of teenagers in that area that are starting to pick up their licenses and they're, you know, obviously daring with their cars and, you know, testing them, so.
Adults in a hurry to go to work, you know, I know a couple of the crashes out there, I know this sounds crazy, but they were, a couple of them were caused by the sun because they were coming into the sun and they didn't see the car that was, you know, parked in the street and they rear-ended it. I know we had two of them like that through, through there, yeah, yeah, back to back days.
Here's my question, I mean, it seems like you're the only one that's come in and brought this to our attention, but I would caution, caution you about speed bumps because there is a perception, I'm in real estate, that streets with speed bumps are perceived as a busy street and may have an adverse association, so I mean, I, I would also keep in mind people that live on that street that may have an adverse impact on the marketability of their property if their street is now perceived as a through street or a busy street.
How long is this street? How long is Westover?
Third of a mile, it says.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's not a long street, but I, I would agree that it's a shortcut into the subdivision and that's what people see it as, coming off of Deer Path to Bennett and it's a shortcut and people, they speed through their, what their perception, I, I don't know how, I've seen that machine there for the last couple weeks and I don't know when it picks up that car, if you're, but by the time you see it, it says slow down or whatever it says, I, I don't know if it's picking it up then or if it's picking up the speed after it gives the driver a chance to slow down or.
It's, it's got a radar in it, so it works just like the ones in our squads, that the instant that it detects motion, it, it catches it, so it actually does catch it quite a ways away.
Can it snap a picture of the license plate?
No, no, it doesn't take a picture or anything.
So, it's possible that it's snapping the radar before you even see the machine?
It could, yeah.
Could you be going, does it only do it one time?
It'll, it'll, as long as there's just one car coming at it, it'll, it'll keep your speed the whole time till you're past it.
So whatever the first instant, so you could be going faster actually after.
It'll follow your speed whether you slow down, Mark, or whether you speed up. If, if you're at twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, it'll just keep climbing.
And it'll record the highest speed?
Uh, yes, I believe it records the highest speed of, per, you know, per vehicle.
It'll jump from one to the other one as it goes by, I don't think.
Right, I've seen it fluctuate, but just for purposes of the data, it's recording the highest speed on the road.
As far as I'm aware, that's how it works, yes.
I have three suggestions. Number one, I know that you got a tremendous Facebook group out there in your subdivisions and I think you need to, to use that to communicate to the rest of the neighbors as to, because it is the people out there that are, that are, the people in your neighborhood are doing it. Second thing would be homeowners association, I know that we have some active homeowners associations and through them you should be able to get the word out to your neighbors and friends. And the third thing, obviously on our village newsletter, we can, we can also specify that, but I don't, I don't see, and if we lower the speed limit, it's not going to make any difference, they're going to speed the same way. Speed bumps are not something we want and they're detrimental all the way around, so I think we have to work with the people that live there and, you know, if, if we can't go through those three ways of doing it, maybe we can come up with a, an individual letter mailed to each person out there, but we've got our water bills, we, you know, we publish size things on that, so, but I think it really, it's really the people that live there are the ones that are violating it, so.
And we, we've, we've contacted their homeowners association, we've posted on their Facebook pages already, it still has yet to curb behavior. I've seen the police out there and I've seen people speed by them where then, I mean, where they weren't like, they caught them late and they, some people slowed down and some people just continued to go and he went and got some, but I think we need some kind of, they have removable, there's other parts of Aurora that have them removable, snowplow, uh, speed bumps that can be taken in and out during the winter time, there's removal, there's kind of flexible chicanes that can cause things, people to move and slow down that, uh, emergency vehicles can just go right over and, and if they need to, but they, they, they're known to, I know Donner's Grove has used them, they, they are caused, they, they are known to curve the behaviors of the drivers.
No, Chief, here's the thought, I mean, perhaps, I know we're tight on staff when it comes down to law enforcement, but even if we could maybe spare an officer on those peak hours for a couple of weeks and see if we can get people to acknowledge that there is some sort of penalty or supervision as far as the speed limits.
Yeah, and that's what I was going to suggest, after the mayor gave his suggestions, is that, you know, as time allows, if we know we have problem areas, we, we will get out there and we do do our best, if nothing else, to educate people, not necessarily to hammer them with tickets or anything like that, but mainly to educate them.
Well, that might be the only education, wouldn't you?
Well, sometimes it is, you know, and like I said before, sometimes it is warranted, so.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's the only audience comments, trustee comments. Consent agenda?
Most approved.
Second. Discussion. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Trusty Capino?
Yes.
Trusty Lowry?
Yes.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Trusty Carroll?
Yes.
Trusty Martinez?
Yes.
Trusty Gaitley?
Yes.
And under new business for this evening, item number one, Mr. Toth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, item number one is approval of a resolution acknowledging the submittal of a final plat of subdivision for the Lincoln Valley subdivision and substantial compliance with the preliminary plat of subdivision. D.R. Horton has submitted their final plat of subdivision for the development of the Fox Valley Golf Course. The preliminary plat was included with the PUD on June 18th of 2018. We reviewed the final plat of survey in conjunction with the preliminary plat of survey. There was one minor change, which came as a result of a staff comment reconfiguring some lots to allow for some overland drainage, but if you look in the packet, there is a letter from the engineer with substantial compliance with the preliminary plat, so we are looking to move this forward at this time. Now, per the subdivision ordinance, the, the plat itself, the final plat is required to go through a subdivision ordinance, public hearing, so we do have this before the plant commission on September 4th, and if there are any issues at that time with the plat, it would come back to the village board after such time, but D.R. Horton is looking to close on the property, so to oblige that, we're going to get feedback on the final plat of subdivision at this time.
Move to approve. Discussion. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Trusty Gaitley?
Yes.
Trusty Martinez?
Yes.
Trusty Carroll?
Yes.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Trusty Capino?
Yes.
Item number two, Michael.
Item number two is approval of a resolution acknowledging the submittal of a phase one final plat for the Lincoln Valley subdivision. That same PUD ordinance that was approved on June 18th allows for the development of the property in phases. In working with D.R. Horton and their engineering groups, they are planning on doing the property in three separate phases. Similar to the same process, the village engineer has reviewed the phasing plan and has reviewed the plats that have been submitted as part of the packet. This would have to come back to the plant commission on September 4th for public hearing and then again, it would come back to the village board if there were any issues. I did invite the village engineer tonight to speak briefly on the phasing plan itself, which is included in the packet, it's after his memo and it shows the three phases of the property and I'll let Jim explain that for a couple minutes.
Yes, thank you, Mike. Good evening, just wanted to give the board a quick summary update on the status of this overall subdivision first and then we'll go over the particulars of phase one. Really, from a staff perspective, this, this subdivision has made an incredible accelerated path through, first of all, the outside agency permitting process, they have obtained their cane do page permit, they have literally just this afternoon closed out the technical review of their IDOT permit for geometrics on Route 25 and their entrance and then just in the administrative filling out forms on that permit, which should be done the next two to three business days. The IEPA notice of intent has been filed and the IEPA sanitary and water permits were turned in literally just this evening. Relative to the plat review and the phasing, the phase one plat that's been given to us, the subdivision has three separate entrances, all of those will be fully constructed as part of the phase one. We have three points of connection and pressure for the water system, all of those will be constructed as part of the phase one. Staff made a strong point in the agreement that the board passed through and attached to the preliminary plat approval that all the utilities needed to be continuous and looped, that we would not have any dead ends either in streets that would raise issues for public works and maintenance and plowing, or utilities relative to dead ends with stagnation of water, lack of circulation, et cetera, along with the issues relative to emergency access for police and fire. All of those have been fully addressed, as you'll see on the phase one limits that, that we've arrived at and will be requesting the, the board to consider here in their approval. Relative to engineering and the plat itself, the developer has received a relatively lengthy staff review on that plat, they obviously worked on it over time and have now fully addressed all of that review commentary. They've received our sanitary sewer and water main markups and review and they have fully addressed those, so the engineering review is very far down the pipeline and staff is very comfortable with the phase one plans and permits at this point.
Thanks, Jim, and just a reminder too, is that the PUD allows for the masquerading of the property regardless of the plat approvals, that was built into that PUD. The approval of the final plat would be subject to allowing them to work on the building permit submission, so at this point in time, they can begin development of the property, we're just looking to get the official approvals on the plats. Thank you.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Trusty Gaitley?
Yes.
Trusty Martinez?
Yes.
Trusty Carroll?
Yes.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Trusty Capino?
Yes.
Item three, Mike.
Thank you, item three is a resolution approving a Route 31 TIF facade grant funding for the property located at 110 John Street. The, the property owner is, is asking for two thousand four hundred and sixty dollars and fifty, fifty cents for funding of awnings in the building, they're looking to install four awnings on the north side of the building and then one awning on the west side of the building. The intent of the awning is for aesthetics also to keep the sun out. As you recall, this Hidden Beauty Salon did receive a TIF grant for windows at one point. This item did go before the operations committee in August 6th with no questions or concerns, so we're looking for a resolution of approval for this TIF facade grant.
Most approved. Second. Discussion. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Trusty Capino?
Yes.
Trusty Lowry?
Yes.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Trusty Carroll?
Yes.
Trusty Martinez?
Yes.
Trusty Gaitley?
Yes.
Item number four, Mr. Toth.
Item number four is an ordinance amending chapter eight point oh four of the Village Municipal Code relating to abandoned vehicles. This item was also discussed at the last operations committee on August 6th. The chapter eight of the municipal code declares the abandonment of vehicles to be a public nuisance, but there are exceptions to that, primarily the twenty-five years of age provision in here, if you look on the staff report or the approving ordinance towards the rear, we're looking to clean the definition of, of what an abandoned vehicle is and it is important to us to remove the vehicles over twenty-five years of age because that insinuates that even if, if a car has historic designated plates but it's inoperable, it would still be, it would be exempt from the inoperable vehicle code, therefore we cannot take code enforcement action on it. So what we're saying by this is that your car has to be in operable condition whether or not it has historic plate designation or not. And again, we did try to clean up the ordinance since we're opening the books at this time, we did remove the seven consecutive days or more as a car being deserted because what that insinuated is that if anyone left their car in the driveway in operable condition being registered, that it could be deemed abandoned, so we wanted to get rid of that as well. So we're looking to clean up the definitions of abandoned vehicles, so that way we can just make sure that any vehicles in town are presentable in an operable condition.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion.
So, a flat tire, things of that nature would be considered abandoned from here on?
Correct.
Okay.
So if they have a tarp on it and you can't see the plates, where does that lead us to on that?
Well, that, that creates, you know, it, it presents a code challenge for us to be able to go on the property, typically we would reach out to the property owner. If we cannot see it, unless we have visible evidence that it is considered inoperable like a flat tire, we do have challenges going onto properties and not being considered trespassing at that point, typically we would just reach out to the property owner and.
And hope he tells you. So if they just put a car cover on it and you can't see the plates, that's kind of a loophole in it?
Not necessarily, I mean, we'd have to look at other codes to see if the tarp is in a certain state of disrepair, there, there are codes that kind of compound this effect. That, that usually does not happen, though.
I thought there was two on some street somewhere that had, they're stacked in the driveway and that, that was the case, they were covered up and the neighbors hated it and it was kind of a standstill because nobody could.
Yeah, usually we would try and do a prove-up if it isn't a tarp, that we do have evidence that it does have registered plates, that current plates and is in operable condition.
So how do we do that?
They usually expect twenty-four hours, if you don't move it in within twenty-four hours, it's used.
This is in the driveway.
Correct, but you know, expired tags and.
If you can't see it though, let's say these cars had car covers that covered the bumpers and everything, they're just sitting there.
Yeah, I think, I think, Tom, I think what you're trying to say is that maybe if it hasn't moved in quite some time, that just kind of more or less leads to the fact that it could be considered inoperable, then we'd kind of go for that prove-up.
That's what I was kind of guessing.
Well, I don't know that you can necessarily go to that standard because somebody could store a classic vehicle that they're not driving in the winter for three or four months and not, not move it and put it under a tarp, that doesn't mean it's an inoperable vehicle.
Yeah, actually, the code used to say that for, if you left your car, we took it out in this section, just.
For seven days.
For seven days, because, I mean, if you go on vacation and you left your car in the driveway for seven days, you'd be in violation because you didn't move your car in seven days on your own property, so.
I think that makes sense, I'm just saying, you know, if somebody's working on a car or just, you know, people plan on doing this three or four years down the road and they cover them up and I've heard neighbors complain about that stuff.
If they're working on a car, they can't do certain things, so if, obviously that's something that we'd have to witness, though, and it, you're right, it presents a challenge because you can't be. And you're right, it presents a challenge because you can't be on people's property going under tarps.
But it does, at least, it's better than what it was by cleaning up and including the 25 years and all.
Hey, the code's always a work in progress, right? So if the board wants to look at that, that's something we could always look at.
All right, thanks.
Court color roll, please.
Trustee Gailey?
Yes.
Trustee Martinez?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis? Trustee Lowry?
Yes.
Trustee Capino?
Yes.
Item number five.
Thanks again. Item number five is approval of a bid from A1 Fowler Inc. in the amount of $24,900 for the demolition of 24 South Monroe Street. There were a total of eight companies that attended a pre-bid meeting for the demolition of the property. As you recall, the village purchased this property this year. We, out of those eight companies that did attend the pre-bid meeting, we had six submit bids for the property. If you can see here on the cover, those are the bid results. They range from $49,500 to $24,900 from A1 Fowler Inc. I did reach out to their references, which included the Village of Donner's Grove, School District U46, and the Batavia Park District. They did receive actual positive feedback from those references. And we're looking to move forward with the approval of the bid to A1 Fowler Inc. for $24,900 for the demolition of the property.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Was there any asbestos or anything? Did anybody do a check on that?
Yeah, we did, we did an analysis before we did the bid. We went out proactively and did that. There were five samples that did have asbestos-containing materials, and that information was shared with the demolition contractors.
And how about mold?
There was no mold present. We had done walkthroughs, staff had. There was no visual mold. But that's not really a concern at this time during the demolition.
But the asbestos is, correct?
Yeah, it had to be remediated.
Because the moment you start tearing up asbestos, it goes airborne, and that's the issue.
Yeah, it was, it was only found in, there were several layers of floor tiling between the two units, and that's where they found it. The fire district, if you recall, we had an IGA for the fire training in the property, and there wasn't a concern of them. So again, it's just, it's kind of buried in some of the floor sandal underlays.
Now, floor tile is different than pipe insulation and others.
Yeah, less likely to go airborne.
The address on that is 24 North.
Is it 24 North Monroe?
Yes.
It is.
Don't tear down the wrong house.
I think there is a 24 South Monroe.
Any other discussion? Well, the court color roll, please.
Trustee Lowry?
Yes.
Trustee Capino?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Martinez?
Yes.
Oh, by the way, that includes hauling everything all the way, correct?
Correct. Yep, landscaping removal, removal of the structures, correct.
Good deal.
Item number six, Mr. Bosco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number six is My Place Hotels, which is now officially open. As you remember, they have a bar component of the hotel, and they have finished it and would like to have their, our first Village Motel Hotel liquor license. And that's what's in front of you tonight.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion.
My Place.
Court color roll, please.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Lowry?
Yes.
Trustee Capino?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Martinez?
Yes.
Trustee Gailey?
Yes.
Item number seven, Mr. Bosco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number seven is a special event request. Someone would like to have a backyard party in the Chesterfield subdivision. The party is going to have a DJ. The DJ is going to be playing till 11:00 PM on a Saturday night. Our noise ordinance says that anything after 10:00 PM, amplification of that nature after 10:00 PM, would require a approval of the village board, so that's why they have to go through the special event permit process. We spoke to the homeowner and suggested that she notify the neighbors, let them know about the party. At the time, she said her neighbors are invited to the party.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion.
Everybody's invited. I mean...
Court color roll, please.
Trustee Gailey?
Yes.
Trustee Martinez?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Lowry?
Yes.
Trustee Capino?
Yes.
Number eight, Mr. Laskowski.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is the approval of a bid from Meat Electric in the amount of $128,520.97 for the LED light fixture pole replacement project. This is a continuation of last year's program in which we replaced 144 LED fixtures throughout town. This year, we're proposing to replace 362. On the east side of town, we're going to be working in Pine Creek, Mitchell, along Mitchell Road, Benberry Ridge Estates, and Fox Valley Country Club Estates. On the west side of town, we're going to be looking at Oak Hill subdivision, Moose Lakes, and then the area around Kilbury, Moorfield, and Comiskey. This year, we received confirmation from ComEd that we're going to have, we're eligible for reimbursement on this project, and ComEd's going to reimburse us up to $38,382 on this project. Meat Electric has worked in the Village of North Aurora. They perform the maintenance on our traffic signals. They've received favorable references from the Department of Transportation, DuPage County, as well as the city of Naperville. So staff's recommending the approval of the bid in the amount of $128,520.97
Motion approved.
To Meat Electric.
Second. Discussion.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Any new developments that come in, is it a requirement now that they have LED lighting?
That's one of the requirements I think we're looking at in the new subdivision.
I think it would only make sense. I mean, if we're transitioning, why even allow, you know, the gas lights to be put in?
I agree.
It was spelled out with our link on the Fox.
Is that for the traffic lights, pretty much? Traffic lights and...
The street lights, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. To the mayor's point, it was a condition of the Fox Valley Golf Course development that they put LEDs in.
We can do that with any new development, right? Make it a condition.
Which we did for the deal at Lincoln Valley and the Fox. Was there a condition of approval?
But that's something we can obviously put in the code to require it moving forward.
Yes.
How many, will this complete the project, or is this, what phase are we in?
This will be Phase Two of Three. Next year, we're going to do 200 more lights, and it should be complete after that.
So it's for over 200?
The rest of Archer isn't, won't be done yet till next year.
Over 200 lines? Is that what they're replacing?
This time, it's going to be 362.
Wow. I think it's a good deal.
The court color roll, please.
Trustee Gailey?
Yes.
Trustee Martinez?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Lowry?
Yes.
And Trustee Capino?
Yes.
Item number nine, John.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is the approval of a bid from Americana Landscape Group Incorporated in the amount of $31,350 for Parkway tree replacement planting. This year's program's going to include 150 trees in six different categories of trees, mainly maples, oaks, locusts, lindens, elms. And then we have a category of some others, including prairie pride, common hackberry, and the London plane tree. We're trying to maintain as much diversity as possible within reason throughout the Parkway trees so that if any, there's a disease that evolves, it doesn't take out a whole bunch of trees throughout town. This year, Americana Landscape Group won the bid. They have worked in Hanover Park, Hawthorne Woods, and the Village of Lake in the Woods, and received favorable references from all three of those villages. So it's a staff recommendation in this case to award the bid to Americana Landscape Group Incorporated in the amount of $31,350.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Will this get us current, then? Like...
With all the ash tree removal, is, or...
I guess.
It's, yeah, it's kind of an evolving program.
Because we are 28,000 on the budget, I just wondered if we could add some more to that and make some more people happy if we can, or...
I think our, yeah, we could...
How many trees is this, again?
150.
Oh.
Can we make sure that they don't get mulch and spread out into other trees? Because otherwise, they'll still spreading the disease to the other trees. I mean, it's like, it needs to be burned or disposed of, whereas not being. Put another, another trees, otherwise it defeats the purpose of what we're doing.
Right, we don't, we don't want to spread the disease. Will, the trees that are being removed are going to be chipped and taken care of that way, and then we'll grind out the stumps following that before we plant a new tree.
Correct. I just want to make sure that the chips don't get thrown ass, you know, not fertilizer, but basically mulch on other trees because you're still contaminating other trees by doing that.
The chips aren't the problem. Isn't this the ash tree, generally speaking, that we're replacing?
The ash trees are mainly the ones...
Right, so that's a bore, that's not a disease. So I don't think that's an issue personally, but... I just want to know about the warranty. Was it a one-year warranty as well?
It's a one-year warranty, yeah.
Court color roll, please.
Trustee Capino?
Yes.
Trustee Lowry?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Martinez?
Yes.
Trustee Gailey?
Yes.
Item 10, Mr. Bosco.
Thank you. Item number 10 is a new three-year contract with our Fraternal Order of Police collective bargaining unit, and that would be our police sergeants. This issue was discussed in executive session a couple of weeks ago, and right now, the contract is in front of you for a final decision.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Court color roll, please.
Trustee Lowry?
Yes.
Trustee Capino?